No, I was in heaven and I learned my wife saw something. They went off. My man, I didn't get a great shot. And he said, uh, Friday. He begged me just to go down. It's some professional sitting down. I want to tell you. Like, we should hang out.
You know, his prison is probably bigger than ours.
I literally had ten. I had like ten. I'm happy, you have forty-eight.
Why they didn't, and first of all, all mine were cheaper. Mine were cheaper.
Hi, if we can all stand please, I'd appreciate it. We're gonna have Councilman Bushman lead us in the invocation, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you that we're able to gather here tonight, Lord. And Lord, as we celebrate our country's birthday, Lord, just request a blessing on our country, Lord. Especially now with our new administration, Lord. And Lord, please help City Council tonight to discuss various issues, Lord. Or please give Captain Bass, Lord, wisdom, Lord, as he assumes his duties, Lord. And please protect our first responders. Your name be great.
Amen. Alright, John Boy, you wanna lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, we'll call the meeting order. Uh, praise and recognition. Uh, we are going to swear in, uh, Cap- our new Chief of Police, Philip Bass, and, you know, uh, I've been very blessed in my ten years mayor, having Joey, then Mark, and I like to move from within if at all possible. And I wouldn't make this move if I did not have, uh, the belief that this gentleman can fill the role, he's lived in St. Albans for twenty-two years. So, we're excited about that. So, Philip, if you wanna come up, and I don't know if you wanna let the wife pee in ya. Like, she might stick ya. And afterwards, we'll get pictures. So, first off, praise right hand. I, Philip A. Bass.
I, Philip A. Bass.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the codified ordinances of the City of St. Albans.
And the codified ordinance of the City of St. Albans.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform.
My duties as, as Chief of Police.
My duties as Police, Chief of Police.
In the Police Department of the City of St. Albans.
In the Police Department in the City of St. Albans.
West Virginia, to the best of, uh, best of my ability, so help me God.
West Virginia, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Making jokes.
Yeah. Alright, rest family come up for pictures if they want to. Wait a minute, Leah used to be like this tall. I miss her. Alright, let me get outta your old way.
Stand up there embarrassed so they can see you.
They might be able to see me if I'm back here.
Now, everybody look to your left.
Everybody look over at Steve over here, Steve's in.
You have the cheap seats behind there. Look around. There you go. I got you.
Hi, Willie.
Speed.
I'm liking. Beautiful Bill passed to help you there. Thank you for your help.
Speed, speed.
Speed, speed. Gotta say a few words, Philip.
Y'all will be long, so, uh, I'm thankful for the opportunity to, and glad that you picked me. So, excited to work with Council. We got a good group of guys. So, you won't see a ton of changes. I think we're already doing a pretty good job. And I had Joey and Gilbert really to, uh, especially Gilbert, the last three years brought me along, showed me a lot of stuff, uh, got me up to speed. So, thankfully, we've had good leadership the, the time that I've been here. Uh, so I'm just thankful for the opportunity and, uh, we'll keep it rolling.
Hey, James, does she pick her feet up now when she's jogging?
Little bit.
Little bit. Bad.
I remember when I first became mayor, she tripped over or something while she was jogging. Sent me a picture of her cut up knee. I said, raise your feet.
You did fix the side one.
Uh, but anyway, congratulations, uh, Philip. We're excited and, uh, again, I would not put you in this position if I did not. So, uh, thank you again.
I'll have cupcakes and cake up at Cold River.
Oh, yeah. Afterwards, uh, Cold River Coffee. Uh, Philip's inviting people over for cupcakes, coffee, what, you know. So, anyway, alright, uh, any other praise and recognition? Yes?
I'd like to thank Mayor Naza Church for providing an excellent fireworks show. I hope, uh, as a lot of you got to watch it.
I got a message. You want Messenger? Uh, hey, gimme. Gimme, gimme.
How are you, Tim?
Doing well. How are you?
Cupcakes is what did it.
I had a lady send me a message, a messenger the other night. Well, doesn't St. Albans have fireworks on the Fourth of July? We hate to go up Charleston, American, blah, 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 SMH. So, I responded back. I said, we're not gonna compete against the Regatta and their fireworks because we would lose people up to them. I said, we combine with, uh, Nitro on, uh, late day weekend, and we have a better fireworks show than what Charleston puts on. SMH shake my head. Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that the girls softball team ten and under is heading to Hedgesville for the state championship. Uh, they're leaving Friday. Uh, anybody who wants to help them. Uh, Dale, Dale Blancy is the coach. Uh, they're looking forward. Uh, but everybody just think about them and, uh, hopefully they'll do well.
They'll do well. They've got, they've got a good chance. Alright, uh, any other praise and recognition?
Mike.
Mike?
I'd like to thank, uh, Amy Paul and Jerry Ray and F T M K for their work on this informational thing. The Public Works Bill. I think it's gonna help people understand some of the ordinances in the city and make it easier on Public Works.
Anything we can do to get them to understand those ordinances is a good thing. So, I appreciate it.
I think it helped out my neighbors. Uh, they did have about fifteen trash bags. And then, uh, also in trash duty, they narrowed it down to five.
And we'll pick up whatever. We don't, we don't care. But put it out at the right time, take them back in at the right time. You know what I mean? I know we're having a problem over in Norton Spark with somebody. Yeah. Uh, but John Boy, anytime you gotta complain or something like that, let John Boy know they will deliver the ordinance to the individual resident. So, you know, we try to work with people.
Right.
Uh, if they don't work with us, then they pay the penalty.
Yeah, I understand that it's hard to, uh, schedule your construction to your house, you know, on whatever, whatever days, but just realize it's not anything. It comes to the following Friday, and that's a personal holiday here.
Right. And outside of chemicals and paint and stuff like that, our guys pick anything up. I'm telling you, they do. They do a wonderful job. Alright, any other praise and recognition?
On the back of what Bill said, the nine, ten, eleven boys play in this state tournament this Saturday coming up, so don't, you know, they're going to Oak Hill.
They're up in Parkersburg.
They're in Oak Hill.
Oak Hill.
Yeah.
Congratulations. St. Albans is being well represented.
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Mayor, I just wanna briefly thank John Boy and Public Works for, in the blistering heat, putting up the potas signs that, uh, were, uh, finished by East Coastees and, uh, were done, I was out with him in the morning, by afternoon they were up, or the next day, something like that. So, I'd like to thank those who put those up.
Is, uh, Wednesday BCA coming down to approve this?
Gentleman was on vacation last week because of the short week. He comes back tomorrow, so we've got a phone call tomorrow morning to get that figured out.
Alright.
Mayor, this is kinda random and off topic. I mean, it's praise and recognition, but it's not in St. Albans, but if you all didn't go to the, I thought the drone show in Charleston last night at Regatta, that was awesome. I've never seen one before, and I mean, I know it's not St. Albans, but give credit to Charleston on that drone show. That was phenomenal. That was special. My kids loved it. It was really cool. If you didn't see it, I think it was W U Madison that did it.
The drone show, shows are very nice, but they're also very expensive.
And, and you could complicate it. I mean, it was neat.
Oh, it's cool.
It was really cool to watch. I've never seen one, but it was neat.
You know, Amy and I are good friends.
Yeah.
She understands maybe collectively, we don't always see eye to eye, but she's done a good job of her.
I just buy credit where it's due, you know.
And several things like that. She's done a good job of it. And, uh, the drone show is something that we and Nitro have talked about, but we gotta come up with a little bit more funding on that, so.
Sponsored?
Yeah, we gotta get sponsored. Alright, um, any other praise and recognition? Alright, uh, approval minutes from City Council, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Got a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, discussion, or changes? John, you got anything? Herb, you got anything? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And, you know, guys, I wanna say something. You know, Herb and I, we, we kinda always, I always try to recognize Herman. But he's here, man. He, he's an interested citizen, and we need more of that in our town. You know, I don't care if people come up, stand at the podium and disagree with something I agree with. That's okay. But Herman's always here. So, I appreciate you, Herman. I do. Alright, uh, no new business suggested, ordinance issues. Addition of council committees to city code. Councilman Campbell, Catlin, Eads, Farrell, Page, Cuts, and Rucker.
I move to, uh, send this topic to the ordinance committee for its deliberation and discussion.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Ordinance is first reading, an ordinance to amend Article thirteen thirty-three point one-six, signs permitting in commercial districts, City of St. Albans, West Virginia. Public hearing to be held prior to the next meeting.
Move this go to second reading.
Alright, questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. An ordinance to amend the unified city service fees in collection from the City of St. Albans, West Virginia. Public hearing to be held prior to the next meeting.
I move that this advance to second reading.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
I just tapped on, um, Joey, if they should call in the office, would it be okay for the girls to say it's a twenty percent increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, you know, I'm gonna say something. The last time it was raised was, what, two thousand nine?
Yeah.
And, I mean, things have gone sky high price-wise, and this is a very minimal increase on our citizens. But for us to maintain, you know, salaries and equipment and things like that, we, we, this is something, to me, that is very important.
I got a question there.
Yes, sir.
It's a twenty percent increase, and that's, um, if you just got the minimum, it's not much. But when you got a family, it's quite a bit.
Well, it, it is. You're exactly right. But for three hundred dollars a year, at this point, they get police, they get fire, they get parks and rep, they get public works, they get infrastructure and everything like that, and I understand that. But with the price of everything going up and including salaries, you know, it's hard for us to find people that wanna work now. But the good employees that we had, they're, they're not good, they're great employees. Alright, and down the road, we're, you know, we gotta be competitive.
I, I understand all that.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Charlie. I understand that.
You done the math at my house, and it's more than any.
Yeah, I mean, it's going from three hundred dollars to three hundred and... Sixty. Yeah, three hundred and sixty dollars a year.
Provided you use minimum, minimum water.
No, this is water.
No, and this doesn't include water, so. This city service fee.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's alright. And it, 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 and that's always the battle. It really, truthfully is. But for us to keep up, and we haven't raised them since two thousand nine.
I, I, to make it easier, the way I'm understanding it, you need seventy-five dollars a quarter right now, or twenty-five dollars a month. You can pay it monthly. You don't have to. It's gonna go to ninety dollars.
Okay, I, I was under pressure of water.
Yeah, the easiest thing, saying the twenty percent because if somebody has a dumpster. That way the girls aren't having to figure it out like, whoa, how many times, but, you know, people call in.
No, 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 that's good, that's good, though. That's good you bring it up, Charlie.
No, 'cause you'll have people calling.
Yes.
Water's part of that.
Well, we're going to hopefully put mailers out in bills and everything else to where people, and put it out on social media and everything else. We're having public hearings. People can come and address that. Alright, so, anyway, question record.
On the very back page, well, minus the signing page, the credits, number two section, the numbers of fifteen thousand income and sixteen thousand, uh, personal, how are those determined?
Yeah, that, that was approved a while back. It just never made it to code. But we have maybe a handful of widows or widowers that bring in, and it's a notarized statement. They bring in all their stuff. There's a form at the office.
Not only that, was that, that num- those numbers determined?
They, they, they bring in their proof and everything.
No, 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 not the, not the person.
You come up with the numbers.
The numbers, okay, before it was ten thousand. The fifteen is poverty. If you, uh, look, it's poverty.
We go by poverty, yeah.
And that's what we had asked to be put in a while back. It just never made it to code. So, since we're upping it now, we're making sure we get that put in there.
Yes.
But it is senior six.
Right, right, and it... Which, uh, me and John and Bill, I think we're the only senior citizens.
Yeah, and we're not all five.
Yeah, they're just very good people that qualify for it.
But we're...
But the problem is starting to run into is where they, the ones that did qualify for it, agreed to. You know, maybe they got a social security increase.
Right.
And it put them over the ten thousand, so we were wanting to keep them at least at the poverty.
Yeah.
I thought wasn't the really low enough.
Yeah, I was going like the W twos.
It's even lower right now.
Really?
Yeah, 'cause my retirement pay's not down in the, so.
Alright, um, any other discussion on this, uh, first reading? Alright, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have no ordinance to second reading. Finance committee report for recommendation. Councilor Ruck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request a motion for approval of payment of current invoices in the amount of thirty thousand, twenty-three dollars, and forty-six cents.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I'd like to request a motion for approval of payment to E S I in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents for outfitting the new St. Albans Police Department cruiser to pay for my item four-four-one-dash-four-five-nine.
Second. Questions or discussion?
What is E S I?
Uh...
Electronic services as, uh, equipment on one of our new cruisers from twenty, the last funded year or so.
Yeah, okay. Electronic service. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Letters and reports, uh, yes, but not...
Park Recreation, Music Night, this Saturday night from six P M. at Roadside Park. A free pool party, July the eighteenth, at six-thirty to eight. And movie at Kirkfield, Saturday, July the nineteenth, at dark. I don't know what movie is.
It's like a baseball team.
Sandlot, yeah, that's a good one. That's a good one.
Storm.
It's called Storm. How many times you trying to show that movie?
Mike, uh, Councilor Rowe, you got any reports?
I do. Uh, so, Public Works, with regard to, uh, bulk items that people put out for trash, uh, there have been a few items that have done damage to the trucks, uh, because they were oversized, and it's, the equipment's just not made as well as it used to be. And, uh, so, we're going to start, we're looking into possibly putting door tags or, uh, stickers on doors when, when something is too big for us to take, uh, to, to remind people to call and arrange. We'll leave it there and leave a note for them to arrange to call for an extra pickup.
Very good.
The other thing we're looking into is, um, we're looking into keeping the transfer station, having the transfer station open to the public during the weekdays, during normal working hours. And if someone wants to haul their own bulk items down there, they can do that, and it will cost less than having us pick it up. And to do that, they would stop by Public, they would stop by Public Works to get a permit. Uh, and we would make sure that they didn't have hazardous materials or things that they weren't allowed to take down there. And then, there's someone working down at the transfer station that would be there to make sure that when they unload it, that nothing, uh, hazardous or illegal is put in the, so.
Very good. Councilor Ruck, you got anything on annexation?
Uh, we will have a meeting on Ju- uh, on the twenty-second of this month at five o'clock. I'm still working out details with Ronnie for logistics, but highly certain as long as we can get the door unlocked. But it won't be an issue. I'll talk with the fire department.
You getting hold of, uh, Councilman Wheeler yet?
I have not. I'll call him tomorrow. Uh, but, but we'll be meeting on the annestation committee and just so no, no hearsay, the topic will be Sun Valley.
Very good.
So, that's what we're gonna be discussing.
Yeah, not going up into Jefferson people yet.
Say anything.
Say it again, Dave. Where do you want me back?
Sun Valley.
We gotta start a couple rumors.
Yeah, we can. Alright, any other letters or reports? Alright, uh, appointments, confirmed appointment at Shelby Bagby, Village Apartments, Villager Apartments, to the Housing Authority to fill the unexpired term of Bailey Kirk, sent to expire seven-three, twenty twenty-six. I move. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, no other appointments, announcements. Ordinance committee, Monday, July seventh, immediately following City Council in the council chambers. Finance committee, Monday, July fourteenth, at four-thirty P M. in the M U C conference room. M S four, M U C Board, Tuesday, July fifteenth, at five-thirty P M. in the M U C conference room. Public hearing, Monday, July twenty-first, at six-fifteen in the council chambers. And ask for both of those first reading ordinances. Alright, and City Council, Monday, July twenty-first, at six-thirty P M. in the council chamber. Any other announcements? Public forum, any resident wishing to address council may step up to the podium, give your name, your address, and you got five minutes to speak your piece.
Do I have to stand up there?
If you wanna speak at the public forum, oh, Lord, I'm like, oh, gosh.
Eric Harper, I live in nineteen twenty-two Benedict Circle.
Don't point the cameras at him, guys. They'll rage.
My request.
Eric Harper.
My request, I have an issue with the stop sign at the corner of South Washington and Bear. I have tons of video that I can post.
Coming?
Coming from Dry Ridge, coming from a Dry Ridge sign.
Okay.
Um, it, it's a big issue. Um, I don't know if we can get like a red flashing sign to put on it, because it's all these, half the people can't read it.
Is it not visible?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah? Oh, yeah.
It's visible.
Eric, one thing I wanna say, we're in the process of looking at, uh, grants to put up some speed signs and put up some temporary speed humps, not bumps. Alright, and we can move them around. Unfortunately, you know, we have four police officers on duty at one time.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, and, but now that you brought this to our attention, uh, I'm sure Chief Bass, doesn't that sound good, Philip?
Until he starts the blind.
Been going on for ten years. Thought today was a good day.
Well, hey, well, Eric, we'll focus in.
Well, what's, what's gonna happen is, I mean, so, I park my truck on the corner, and then they have to stop.
Yeah.
'Cause you can't see around my truck.
I like it.
And I mean, I've posted black pink signs that says stupid, can't read, don't drive.
I, you know, I've noticed in other towns, there's blinking the lights like it's...
Yeah, I was gonna say on one out there also.
But my question is, does it, is it effective? And I need to call maybe Gerald and those guys up South Charleston and see if it has been effective. Uh, and then we can maybe look at applying notes to some of our stop signs around town where we're having issues. But I appreciate that, yeah. But we'll focus in on that area.
I'll be too.
The prop- the problem is, we give tickets, we'll focus in.
Well...
And then, after we're gone a week, they start the same old stuff.
Well, to tell you how bad it is, Cody Beckner sat up there for an hour one day and wrote seventeen tickets.
That's, that is bad. You're right. I agree.
Money in the bag.
Yeah, well, we, hey, hey, and the thing of it is, people don't realize, and everybody always says about quotas and stuff, the City of St. Albans, when we're writing ticket, we do not get the majority of that funds. The City of St. Albans, when we were writing ticket, we do not get the majority of that fund. A lot of it goes to the state. Am I right, Phillip?
You're correct.
Wow.
Yep, I know. So they ain't quotas. We're not getting rich off of them, but we do need to work on that. And we're, we're working on grants to get some speed signs mobile that we can move around saying you're going too fast, or this is your speed. I don't know if that'll make a difference, but speed humps, portable ones, we. All right, and you got to put signage out about 20, 30 feet in front of the speed hump. And that way you're covered. And, uh, if they want to go speeding and tear their car up, it's on them. It's not on the City of St. Albans.
John Boy, can we put the roofs in the road and make it sort of rumbles that way, do anything?
Rumble strips? Anyway, any other, uh, public forum? Thank you, Eric. No further public forum. I will entertain a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, oh, yes, sir.
I wanted to hear more about the Sun Valley and Charles Whittington from Sun Valley Edition. And since right before COVID, you know, the big name then, you know, had certain meetings here. And, but since then, I think I talked to you once, and since then, we haven't heard much. And I've heard more here tonight and I've heard, you know.
Charles, unfortunately, uh, due to COVID and other, uh, things, and I'll take some of the blame. All right, we, we, we just have not been as aggressive on that because we've been trying to deal with and develop other things. But I know Councilman Rucker was going to get it on it sooner, but he had some surgery. Hurting surgery and everything else. And he, he, he's going to get it going. We're going to have a meeting. And then we'll proceed from there.
The, the hope was to start right at, I'm a school teacher. The hope was to start right at the end of the school year because we have to go door to door to get signatures. Like he said, I had two medical issues that I wasn't able to.
So anyway, we can help if that.
Yes.
Yes, sir, we will.
Come to the meeting on the 22nd at 5 o'clock. It'll be here. Um, so we will need to get citizen signatures and all. So we will be talking about it at that meeting. Um, and, but to be clear, that meeting will make a recommendation to this group. That it then goes from there, right? So, um, but the ball is rolling. I, we, we talked about it this week and last week as far as myself and the committee. And then myself and the mayor and, and the clerk have talked about it this week, so.
And we have people out there, and they're not there. We have a homeowner association. And when you go around and try to, you know, collect money for the homeowner, they say, well, we might be one in the city. What are we doing this for, you know? But we haven't heard anything about the city since it's like.
Right.
And so.
What happens a meeting on the 20th?
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock by here, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and, and, and we'll, we'll, I, I mean, we'll put it out on social media, whatever, get as many people as we can. And when we go door to door, our is to hit every door in Sun Valley. Up, uh, is that, what is that, Lakewood Road or something? Uh, and down, uh, Forestburg. That's where we cut it off at, at Forestburg. Uh, we're not going up the hill yet.
That's not part of Sun Valley, but if y'all want to include it, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of people out there want that, so.
I know, we do.
We do.
I think a lot of people out there the first time thought the, uh, city services were a lot more than what they are. You know, I, I brought it to the tension that a lot of people out there in Sun Valley, with what they pay for trash and a few other things, the city services is not that much more.
The waste manager, well, and, I mean, you're just talking about waste management. But you also get police, you get fire, you get all that other stuff with it. And it, uh, is a benefit to not only Sun Valley, but our community.
But all of this, this is, this is what the discussion for the 22nd meeting was.
Yeah.
That's, that's a question.
Yeah.
Probably there was getting word out to the people inside about, hey, this is, if you're, if you got trash and you're paying on the street line or, or, uh, something like that, your city services is not that much more, even when you're raining. And you get trash picked up twice a.
Twice a week.
Twice a week. And heck, you can't even get waste management in a winter, even come. It's to, uh, Mount of State.
You're right.
Trash is once a week. Extra pickup is going on.
Friday, if they put it out, they pick it up. All right, uh, Friday was originally geared towards heavy duty stuff. But we will pick up trash if they put a couple bags out on Friday.
And still, I want that in place, man.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir. All right, any other public forum?
We know.
All right, uh, with no other, you got any more?
No, sir.
All right, uh, I will entertain a motion for a jury.
Motion to a jury.
Uh, you got a second?
Say it.
All in favor, say bye.
Bye.